Call the Apache Junction City Council meeting to order. The pledge will be led by Councilmember Rizzi after the invocation by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Heavenly Father, we are again gathered together this very warm evening to perform city business. Please be with us and our staff as we address city business while we continue to keep this community be a great place to live, work, have a business, and raise a family. We want to ask for your continuing help in hand to everyone that has been affected by the storm in North Carolina, as well as other areas that the storm is moving very slowly with. With all of its rain, keep everyone safe and be with the families that are experiencing losses. Keep them and them safe as they recover. We also want to pass our condolences and thoughts and prayers to the Gomez family with the passing of Rich Gomez, as you know, as also known as Shadow. Rich was a local veteran and chapter leader of the Apache Junction Guardian Angels. We also ask for your protective hand to everyone that has been sent to the storm area and help them with the recovery. Keep them all safe. Finally, we ask for your continued protective hands for our first responders in our community. Keep them all safe as they continue to protect us every day. We ask for the extended to our military members and their families wherever they're serving throughout the world. In the Lord's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Sertie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Barker?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Strubel?
Here.
Councilmember Waldron?
Here.
All members present, do you have a quorum, Your Honor?
Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented in the purchase of a new 2020 Freightliner M2-106 dump truck through the Houston-Galveston area. Council Cooperative Contract Number HT-6-018 in an amount not to exceed $125,000 be approved.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Strubel?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
I have two proclamations. First one is Child Passenger Safety Week. Whereas children are our future and it is it is the responsibility of parents and caregivers to keep America's children safe, and whereas car seats are required by law for children traveling in motor vehicles, and whereas traffic crashes are the leading cause of death for children ages one through thirteen, and whereas research shows that car seats reduce the risk of fatal injury for infants by seventy-one percent and by fifty-four percent for toddlers in cars, and by fifty-eight percent and fifty-nine percent for infants and toddlers in SUVs, pickups, and vans, and whereas parents and guardians must make sure that children aged twelve and under always ride in the backseat buckled up in properly installed child safety seats, and a rear-facing child's seat should never be placed in the front seat of a motor vehicle equipped with a passenger airbag, and whereas children riding in the right seat for their age and size can be accomplished by a car seat inspection that ensures the safety of a child while traveling. Now therefore, I, Jeff Sertie, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of September twenty-third, 2018, through September twenty-ninth, 2018 as Child Passenger Safety Week in Apache Junction, and urge all citizens to work together to keep children and passengers, our children passengers, safe, and this came from the Police Department.
I got nowhere to go.
Everybody knows you're here.
And the other one is for Constitution Week. We've been hearing a lot about that this week. Whereas September seventeenth, 2018 marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-first anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Jeff Sertie, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of September twenty-third through the twenty, seventeenth through the twenty-third to be Constitution Week in Apache Junction, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven. And I know we have the Daughters of the Revolution are here.
She is the, our new region of our Apache Trail Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. My name is Karen Barks. I am the Constitution Week Chair. So far this week, we have talked to about two hundred children. We read "we," the kids, to them, which is an explanation for second graders about the preamble to the Constitution. And we've talked to about four, well, about four hundred altogether children, but about another two hundred fifth graders. Fifth graders have a emphasis on American history, and so then we do talk to them in an assembly. Sometimes they didn't understand that there was a correlation between the Revolutionary War and the Constitution. So we thought it was important that they understand that, and so we've, I've done a PowerPoint to show how that works, and they they do enjoy the PowerPoint. We also do a little skit where we talk about people who lived in those times, and then we get these very interesting comments. We wear our colonial garb, and the and the kids will say, "Well, what was it like during that war?" And so one, one little boy today said something like that, and I said, "Well," I said, "The Constitution was two-hundred-and-thirty-one years ago, and the war started in seventeen seventy-four, so you know what this year is, so you figure out if I can be that old or not." What I told him is very interesting. Another interesting thing that I've decided to bring up to them, it's the shortest Constitution in the world, and and it starts with a very revolutionary idea. What does the preamble say? It says, "We, the people." And that's why it's revolutionary. It's not "I, the king," or "we, the government," but it's "we, the people," and we should all remember that, and thank you very much.
Does anyone have any announcements? Go this way first.
I've got a couple in.
Okay. Can I go?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We're going to be, the Horizon Health Earth Park and the Rhino Recreation Center will be hosting a open-mic night. It's going to be on the first Friday and third Thursday of every month going forward until it gets hot again, and then we're going to try to find a inside venue. But what that is, is we're going to be inviting young, well, young people to me who have a desire to show off their musical or singing talents, and they can come out and sing a couple songs or ten minutes, and it'll be held from six to nine on those nights. So look for information on the newspapers and local media, and we'll also be advertising throughout the schools and everything that goes along where young people would be, would get that information. The other thing I want to talk about is last Tuesday night, I was able to once again present the Student of the Month Certificates at the AJUSD, and it was very interesting. The principals of each of the schools, the three elementary, the junior high, and the senior high, described why the young people deserved their Student of the Month, and there was a very strong correlation. They, all of them were friendly and served their community, and there was a willing serve, willing, the willingness to serve. It was a very, it was very prevalent as to why the, they were all nominated by the teachers within their, each of their schools, and I thought it really exemplified the vision that we, that the city has, which is Apache Junction is a diverse community of natural beauty and heritage that offers prosperity, compassion, and forward thinking to its students, businesses, and visitors. And I think that's just a great thing that our students exemplify the vision of our community.
Also, at Earth Heart Park, two Saturdays ago, we had, a group of us showed up to clean out the vegetable gardens to get everything ready for the winter season. We had some tree damage over there in the storms, but in October, it'll start the first farmer's market of the season through April. Also, I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Wayne Ness, who's a property owner of land that is just north of our old Plaza Shopping Center. He allowed the city to create a five-foot wide path from Plaza to Flatiron Park so that people can walk along Plaza, and in a way, it sort of connects both Earth Heart Park and Flatiron Park. All he asked was for a simple agreement. It's been done, it's been signed, and whenever that parcel is eventually sold, we can at least say, "Well, the city has this path here, and we'd like to continue it." So it was a really nice gesture from an individual property owner, and I just want to say thank you.
I want to say something real quick before we go on. I know we have several folks in the audience that I think that may want to speak tonight, and I just want to remind everyone that to speak at call to the public, you must fill out a form and have it in by the end of the City Managers' Report, which is coming up real quick, and they're available out in the foyer. Robin?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I went to the concert in the park on Saturday. It was very hot, but there were lots and lots of people there, which surprised me. Lots of kids playing in the splash pad, dogs, people sitting out on the lawn, so they had a great time. And to remind everybody that next Saturday, there will be the movie in the park, and I'm not sure which one this one is.
Infinity War.
Is that what it is?
Infinity War.
That's, okay, Infinity War. That's, okay, so come on out. It'll be cooler this weekend. This weekend will be cooler. Temperature's going down now. It's time to come out and enjoy the park. There's something there almost every Saturday, so come on out.
I've got some things. This past week, I had attended a meeting called the East Valley Partnership with Staff Member Janine Sully, and these meetings are held at EBIT, and a lot of the discussion is how EBIT can help businesses with trained employees. There are students that come out of these programs and and how they can help, how EBIT can help prepare students to get into the work field. It's definitely something that would be beneficial to local businesses here in Apache Junction. I've attended it on and off over the last year or so. But one of the things that came out of this meeting was some of, the City of Tempe and the City of Mesa, some of the things that the City Council had done in those two cities to connect with their local school district in helping, they made resolutions and agreements to assist with early childhood learning. One, you know, I had learned that only about a third of our kindergarten students are actually able to pass kindergarten and be prepared to go on to first grade, and this was, this was very alarming to learn these statistics, and so this is, there's some conversations I'd like to bring to our City Council in the near future and see what we can do as a city to work with our local school district in, in helping in that area. And also, some neat things happening with our school district. We have the, the high school fiftieth reunion coming up, but the school, the high school is also bringing back some old traditions that are going to be very exciting for the community, and one of them is going to be the homecoming parade coming up. It's going to be on Saturday, I believe, from nine to ten. So watch the newspapers. I know it was listed in the Independent. I'm sure that AJ News will have the exact time and location, along with a homecoming bonfire. This is a, an old tradition that they used to do at the high school, and it's something that we're bringing back to the community, and it just makes, one more thing that makes our community have that hometown feel, so thank you.
So we don't know where the parade will be yet?
I believe it was southern on Idaho, on Ironwood and Southern.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chip?
Yes. First off, I would like, I'm going to comment concerning the, up, or this past election that we had, and I want to thank everyone that came, that did vote and came out to vote or put in their absentee ballots. And, you know, you all making decisions to help the city as we go into the future, and it's very important. On the same token, I want to basically, as I said, in, come out and criticize less than seventy, excuse me, over seventy percent of the registered voters, and we have over nineteen thousand registered voters in the City of Apache Junction, failed to come out. And have to remember that, that seventy percent, over seventy percent, did not vote, and I, I think that's a real atrocious in the idea that we did not, they did not come out and try to say how the city goes forward in this matter. Again, I do appreciate everyone that did come out and vote. Thank you very much for helping us out, and we will continue on with your guidance.
I just want to add one other thing. It's, I love events, and whenever asked what Apache Junction does best, is I say we do events better than anybody in the valley, and I want to have events every day of the week, and on Saturday, the city is having the park events, and on Friday, one of the businesses is inviting food trucks and musicians to play at Shopper's Supply from now until May, and that, that can be very interesting. So we'll not only have something to do Friday night and Saturday night, and I think Sunday night's open, so we need somebody to step in there, so. City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a few items to report. With regard to the parade, we're coordinating closely our public safety department and Parks and Rec, and the school district's goal is to start small, do some pilot projects. The actual parade, the vast majority of the viewing is actually on school property. The part that will be best viewed is if, you, the way I like to describe it is back where the, where the bus, the bus announcement is where the kids go to the bus to get shade. It's there by the tennis court, so you'll need to get on and park maybe on the north side of the gym and and walk around there. So look for that at nine o'clock this Saturday.
This Saturday?
This Saturday, nine AM, and that is kind of the kickoff of festivities for the homecoming, and then they're having the homecoming dance that Saturday, and then they have the bonfire the next Thursday, and then the actual game is on Friday.
Ah, so they're having it prior, okay.
That is correct.
Gotcha.
Kind of a kickoff.
It's kind of a kickoff or the kickoff. I also want to report that we are in the process of purchasing trophy case over the last months, and over the time that I report back awards and presentations that our staff have had, including our council, we're running out of places to put them, like on the council day, so we will have out in our lobby here in the next few weeks, a place to put them. So, wanted to give you that report, and then we have received as part of the annual Pinal County United Way Dinner and Awards Ceremony, the City of Apache Junction received an award for being the top, one of the top fifteen investors, and I'm very proud of our staff and our community, or our staff being a part of that, and so I wanted to just bring that to the public and to our mayor and council. We are very appreciative of everything the United Way of Pinal County does, and we feel them as that they are a partner with us. And that concludes my report tonight.
And you reminded me of one other one, of, out of ninety-one cities in the state, we're in the top twenty or safest cities in the state, so. Consideration of application for temporary extension of premises for Elks, number two three four nine. Kathy?
Yes, Your Honor, this is a application filed by Cynthia Pearson, Cindy Pearson, on behalf of the Elks, for a one-day event on October fifth. It's the Apache Junction High School Reunion Mixer. In your packet, you have comments from the Police Department, zoning, and the Superstition Fire and Medical District, and they all are in support of this event, and Cindy is here this evening. In the event you have any questions.
Would the applicant like to say anything? Or promote?
Any questions you might have about this mixer? It's our first one at the Elks Lodge. I'm Cindy Pearson from Apache Junction Elks Lodge, two three four nine. Thank you. And this is our first time doing an event like this, but it will just be an extension of premises, not a special event, and it's for five hours, from five to ten, on the Friday previous to the reunion at Prospector Park.
Thank you. Any questions? Doesn't look like it, so thank you.
All right.
Any further discussion? Is this a public hearing? Is this a public hearing? Would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the application for temporary extension of premises submitted by the Elks, BPoe twenty-three forty-nine, two-four-five-five North Apache Trail, Apache Junction, Arizona, for the Apache Junction High School Reunion Mixer on October fifth, two thousand and eighteen, be approved.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Councilmember Strubel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Consideration for application for special event liquor license for Pinal County Veterans Memorial Foundation. Kathy Conley again.
Yes, Your Honor. This is a, a public hearing, and this is a special event liquor license. It's for one day, a one-day event in March of two thousand and nineteen. The application has been submitted by the Pinal County Veterans Memorial Foundation. In your packet, you have comments from the Planning Division, the Police Department, and Superstition Fire and Medical District, and they all are in approval or recommending approval of this, of this license.
Is the applicant here? She like to say anything?
Yep, there she is.
Pinal County Veterans Memorial Foundation, most of, some of you have heard about us. We were formed in two thousand and ten, and this is our fifth annual fundraiser here in the Gold Canyon Apache Junction area. We do not have a memorial to represent all wars of the fallen heroes, and I am a board member as well as a historian for our foundation. I also wrote a book about our fallen soldiers, individual soldiers, that when I was researching, I found out that there was a story to tell about each individual soldier. So we're building a memorial, and this is how we earn our funds, and we're hoping to do Phase One by the next spring, so I'm kind of anxious we're getting very close to start breaking ground. And also, if anybody wants to have a flyer about us, I'll be glad to pass that on to you guys.
Of course, you could leave some of those out.
Sure.
In the foyer, too.
Where will the memorial be?
It'll be in Casta Grant. Casta Grant has donated an acre and a half, and it'd be like a park-like setting, and the families can bring their children to educate where, you know, what the freedom is not free, and the veterans can come and do, have some solace on this. The individual names of the fallen heroes will be on the memorial, and just a little bit more detail, the, we'll have a bronze soldier with a flag presenting to anyone that comes up, and all my research on the memorial of all these fallen soldiers will be in a kiosk, so if anybody wishes to know about a certain soldier, they can key in and find out about them.
Thank you.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any more discussion? I'll call for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the application for special event liquor license submitted by the Pinal County Veterans Memorial Foundation for an event to be held at Dulce Vita, thirty-three zero one South Goldfield Road, Apache Junction, Arizona, on March ninth, two thousand and nineteen, be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Strubel?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Consideration of application for special event liquor license for the Chamber of Commerce for the event at Flatiron Park. Kathy Conley.
Yes, Your Honor, and again, this is the last public hearing tonight you have on liquor licenses. This is a one-day, actually a two-day special event. The application is from the Chamber of Commerce. It is for the Festival of the Superstitions on March, November tenth and eleventh. The event will be at Flatiron Community Park. In your packet, you have comments from the Superstition Fire and Medical District, the Police Department, and the Planning Division, all of whom recommend approval, and the applicant is here this evening. In the event you have any questions.
Would the applicant like to say anything? Or promote?
Put it through the ringer. Mr. Mayor, City Council. Mike Eastwood, CEO of the Chamber. Again, it's just the thoughts that we're doing. Where it is, it's kind of, we're going to have the car show and working with the veterans and the VA and the parade and, and everything else, so it's going to be an exciting year. The entertainment's all booked. We do have a committee. It's actually tomorrow at one o'clock, and if anybody wants to be on, and we meet every other Wednesday, anybody from the public, anybody else at the Chamber can stop by and be involved in the committee and make this a successful event. That's really what I have. Thank you.
So this license is for Flatiron Park, but there's events going on all over the city, correct?
Yes, but most of it will be all in the vent, the parade, the VA handles, the, the parade section, but everything will be inside the park.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Your Honor, I don't think he mentioned what time that was.
It's in the, it's on the application.
Yes, on the application, so it's, I know it's Saturday and...
The committee meeting is tomorrow.
Oh, one o'clock. Yeah, one o'clock on Wednesdays. Every other Wednesday. Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any more discussion? I'll call for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the application for a special event liquor license submitted by the Apache Junction Chamber of Commerce for an event to be held at Flatiron Community Park, one hundred North Apache Trail, Apache Junction, Arizona, on November tenth, two thousand and eighteen, and November eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control.
Second.
I heard a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Strubel?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Presentation, discussion, public hearing, and consideration on Resolution Number eighteen dash thirty, Amerco Real Estate Company. Says Rudy, but I believe it's Alon.
Excuse me, Your Honor?
Yes.
I need to ask our city attorney if there might be a conflict for me. So Joel, I have, my husband and I have a U-Haul dealership here in the community, and I don't know if that might be a conflict. and I don't know if that might be a conflict.
Well, under ERS thirty-eight dash, I believe, starting at five oh one, and following, and also Attorney General, uh, decisions and case law, there are exceptions for conflict of interest. Excuse me. If you are in, if you're one of ten in a class, so if it's more than ten, you're okay. If it's less than ten, then it's probably a conflict. And if you can't determine it, then probably be good to step out on this one.
Okay.
That'd be my advice, but that, that is the rule. Um, and I don't know if there's ten dealers, or if there's more. Because we're talking about a general plan amendment, not the rezoning tonight, but we're talking about a general plan amendment, but it would directly affect U-Haul. So, it's up to you, but I think, um, if you feel more comfortable stepping out on this one, and probably the rezoning also.
Okay. Your Honor, I'm, I'm just gonna recuse myself. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, members of council, my name's Alon Valander. I'm Economic Development Specialist for the city. I'm here to present, uh, economic development, uh, vision and standpoint on Amerco's Jeep, general plan amendment and zoning applications. Um, I'd like to start, just in recognition that these are, are two separate applications, one for a general plan amendment, one for a zoning hearing on that. I'd like to start with the general plan amendment and go through a few of the, the pieces that in regards to this. The general plan amendment is essentially the first step in many, uh, uh, first step in process to, of many steps that would be required to properly, uh, zone and title and prepare this land for future, uh, economic, uh, employment uses, uh, within the city. Uh, future steps included would be rezoning, uh, plating or subdividing, uh, making sure the utility usements are in place, and also infrastructure improvements on this piece of land. Net effect of the general plan amendment application is essentially this. We, we are looking to remove four to fifteen months of bureaucratic process that would inhibit, uh, a relocation of a business that needed an industrial, uh, land use or zoning in this case. In addition, this action is focused on jobs producing opportunities, not necessarily sales tax-producing opportunities. This is fifty acres of land, uh, that would have an industrial use on it and provide for opportunities for businesses that would be bringing, uh, the goal would be to bring living wage, high jobs production. It also increases our ability to respond to potential business relocation requests that come from our regional partners, like GPEC, the ACA, which is a state economic development body, Sun Corridor, which is a body that partners with Tucson and Penale County. Uh, all of these organizations, uh, filter in requests to the city. Over the past five years, I've had the opportunity to look back to getting general gauge as to how many of these we see and receive. Um, on average, over the, those five years, we see in the range of about fifty to seventy-five, kind of in the sixty ranges is fairly typical. Um, over the five years that I've been with the city, we've been able to respond to probably ten or less of those, and the primary reason is we do not have building nor land that is properly zoned or entitled for these types of projects. The application brings forth eighty acres of land that sits at the southeast corner of US sixty and Idaho roads. This application suggests a change of the land use of fifty of those acres. Currently, this approximately eighty-acre parcel is in our general plan, uh, under a community commercial type of designation. The applicant is asking to take fifty of those acres and change them to a, an industrial business park, uh, use, maintaining the, the remaining net acreage, which is about twenty-eight or so, as a commercial. The second piece of what we're looking at is the rezoning. Uh, there are two zoning designations within this that are, are being considered. Fifty acres of that would be an industrial business park. Ten acres of that, under the rezoning, is, is spoken directly to a U-Haul, uh, project, a proposed U-Haul project. The remaining twenty-eight acres is, again, commercial. End goal of this, of these actions, is essentially to produce a project that has potential positive impacts for the local economy. That being jobs, um, from an economic development standpoint, jobs is, is a huge piece of this, this fifty acres creates opportunity to be responsive to that. TPT, which is more generally known as sales tax funds, these funds do absolutely help and fund the majority of the city services, uh, that are provided to our residents. In addition to that, we look at, uh, opportunities for extension of infrastructure. The further infrastructure goes, the more opportunity for future developments in those areas. And then, quality of life, um, types of businesses that we're bringing in that are providing good quality jobs for our residents, and in the commercial area, potential, uh, uses, whether they be entertainment or some other type of use that our residents would enjoy, um, utilizing and shopping at. Other part, or other goal with this is to create a zoning ordinance that creates clean and, and clean industrial business park for jobs creation. And we view this happening through a process of partnership and co-b beneficial, um, compromise between what the city's looking for and what the business is looking for, and making sure that everything, everything lines up, that we're not leaving something on the table, and the business has an opportunity to be successful. That being said, at the previous, uh, planning and zoning hearing that happened on the eleventh, Amerco did request a continuance at that, uh, hearing for their zoning part of the application. Just to speak to that, as, uh, from an economic development standpoint, I, I, we're supportive of that continuance in the vein that we do want a quality and viable project, um, so we wanna make, ensure that those things that, that are being requested, um, the applicant has sufficient opportunity to really qualify how that works for their project moving forward, and give opportunity to, to discuss those things. So, um, background, how did this come, how did this come to our city? Amerco purchased the, these eighty acres several years ago, after the recession. As you well know, this was a diversified partners, uh, parcel, and it was zoned for a, uh, commercial power center, not unlike what you might see over at Signal Butte. Uh, the economy changed, diversified partners eventually lost control of that land, and Amerco ended up, uh, picking it up on a sale. Amerco came and proposed a U-Haul project probably two years ago. The U-Haul project's been discussed from the beginning, but about two years ago is when this particular part of the process initiated. Staff, uh, support for U-Haul project in and of itself, by itself, there wasn't, uh, there wasn't sufficient staff support. So, U-Haul, or Amerco asked the city, city staff, what, what is the city's vision? What are the city's needs? How can we work to accommodate those and find a, a project that would work for both of us? So, the response was essentially that there are really two areas that the city, the city could, could gain here. Expanding an employment corridor. There are very few industrial, uh, areas within the city. There is one immediately next door and adjacent to this parcel, that's about forty acres. It's industrial, it, it supports a, a lot of smaller industrial businesses, um, many mom-and-pop type of, of industrial businesses. There is another industrial park that's, uh, up in the northwest corner of our city, just south of Safeway. Um, that one is filled with, uh, storage lots and recycling centers. There is another one that sits off of Seventeenth and Eighteenth Avenue on Tomahawk, and that one is primarily filled with storage lots and recycling centers, a couple auto body shops and a mechanic. Um, none of, none of the existing are really geared towards producing these larger employers, high number of jobs, uh, and high pay, higher paying jobs. So, this is an opportunity to create forty acres where we can gear and, and do some recruitment of those types of businesses. Secondarily to jobs, the city indicated to the applicant that commercial's really important. We, we live off of sales taxes. Our services are provided based on the funding that comes in from that. It's one of our primary sources of, of fund, excuse me, of funding. Um, so the applicant, understanding that, just went out and did some research. Um, we pointed, uh, we pointed them to some of our, our partners, GPEC specifically, so that they could better understand the industrial market at this point in time. They did some research on their own. They came back and said, okay, we can see, we can see the value in fifty acres of industrial here, um, we can support that. We would also like to leave the net acreage for commercial for the opportunity of sales tax production in the future, as the market drives, drives that. Um, and finally, U-Haul provided a conceptual plan that, that provides for both of these, and in addition, had a ten-acre piece on the northwestern corner that had their U-Haul project on it. So, staff has worked over the past two years with U-Haul to really identify what types of uses we would like to see in this industrial, industrial park, what types of uses we definitely would not like to see in this industrial park. I'll qualify what, what that means. Some of the uses that we really removed out were uses like storage lots, um, contractor yards, where essentially, what we're seeing is land being used for non-productive economic activity. We wanna see businesses come in that bring jobs to this industrial area. So, we worked together. Um, U-Haul identified a list of uses that they definitely didn't want, the city identified a set of uses that we didn't want, and then the bulk of whatever was left in the ordinance, uh, was, remained. So, that being said, just a quick executive summary, in regards to the general plan amendment, this is a critical action, economic development. We believe this is a critical action necessary to expand our corridors for potential future quality employment opportunities. We're full, in full support of the requested changes. On the rezoning, second step in this process to ensure that a quality project for both the city and the developer. And what I mean by that is, we need continued partnership to ensure that we don't end up with a piecemeal development. We don't wanna see, in the future, roads missing or roads half-done. We don't wanna see projects that, that don't meet standards. What we do wanna see is that the developer understands the city's vision, and, for the area, and that we have a path to the project that meets the city's vision and requirements, but also considers the private markets, market realities. If we overask, or we, we fail to ask on something, we lose out on our opportunities. If we overask, we might end up with a project that doesn't come to fruition. So, we're just looking for an opportunity to bring a quality, a viable, quality project to the table. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Alon? Robin?
Um, did I understand you correctly to say that at the planning and zoning meeting, the company asked for a, a continuance of the item? So, how does that impact what we're talking about tonight?
So, as far as, the, the applicant is, is willing to move forward the general plan amendment, which is really interesting when you look at the scope of it. The general plan amendment can move forward without the rezoning moving forward today. The rezoning, asking for that continuance, gives them opportunity to understand the request that the city's, uh, city has made, request some information that they feel may be missing, so that they can make a more qualified and more quality decision as to what their project looks like, in, in regards to, uh, potentially U-Haul and how improvements that we're requiring actually lay out. So, there are some elements that, uh, the city has, uh, requested have been made. For example, uh, parkway improvement on Idaho, that the applicant has yet to see cross-section seats, sheets on. So, they're not sure, they understand they're gonna, they're willing and open to dedicate the seventy-five foot, but when it comes time for them to develop that, they're not even sure what that development looks like quite yet, because we don't have those cross-section sheets. We haven't, we haven't provided that. Right now, J-two's working on one in the, the transportation plan. We have an older one, um, but we haven't provided that detail, detail to them yet. So, there's some, there's some elements that they're looking for clarification, so that they can move forward, um, with the right decisions in terms of their projects.
So, basically, what you're saying is that we would be voting as to the general plan amendment, but we would continue the rezoning, the same as it was continued at planning and zoning. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
And to when is this continued? Is it a date certain? Is it?
I, I believe that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended a date certain. I can't recall what that was.
November thirteenth.
November thirteenth is what they recommended. Um, I would look to Joel, but I would imagine that you guys can. The applicant had asked for thirty to sixty days. You could set a date certain yourself, I believe, um, whatever it was that you, you had chosen.
So, our best bet then would be to set a date after the planning and zoning went through it, and if they're seeing it, when did you say, Joel?
November thirteenth.
November thirteenth is when the planning and zoning.
So, when's the next?
Rezoning would. But I'm not sure you have to set a date, um, because...
Just continue it until following?
You, you could, I mean, if you continue it now, we don't know what's gonna happen on the thirteenth. Rudy could probably talk to this when that item comes up. Uh, however, I mean, I don't know if the applicant needs more time, 'cause that kinda went back and forth at P&amp;Z, so when they get up, you can ask them.
Okay.
Uh, because right now, if you just continue it to a date in the future, um, there's no cost to the, uh, publication. However, there might be some other issues that Rudy might wanna bring up, or the applicant might, 'cause they needed numbers, but we can talk about that during the rezoning process of the, uh, of the, of the public hearing.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Um, just to, to clarify, from an economic development standpoint, the general plan amendment is, is the bulk of the, the lift here in terms of moving forward. It does remove that fifteen-month, maximum fifteen-month wait that could happen if somebody came in today to be able to bring a project to the city. The rezoning is our opportunity to make sure that we have a quality project. And so, if, I, I believe that, uh, it, if the council feels so fit, um, having time for conversations and making sure that we're, we're making the right decisions on that rezoning, it would be, it would be good.
So, next step tonight is the applicant to speak.
I think Rudy, Rudy, tip, will have a presentation. He's got more detail than I do in regards to the, you know, the actual rezoning and all the application stuff. I just wanted to give a broad overview from an economic development standpoint.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we're on Rudy now?
Do we vote on this one?
I believe there's gonna be a motion, yeah.
Yeah. Just like. So, we're going to vote on these separately, then?
So, we'll discuss, we'll discuss both of these items, and then we'll vote on them separately, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's my presentation. Any questions?
That's it. You're done. Thank you.
Uh, Alon's already covered most of the background. Uh, property was rezoned back in seventy-eight to CI one PD with no development plan. Uh, the, there was a rezoning for a six-hundred-thousand-square-foot power center on the entire seventy-eight-acre property. The economy went bad. It never happened around, uh, two thousand and eleven. Uh, Amerco bought the property. We have been discussing possibility of development for the property ever since early two thousand and twelve. Case GPA one eighteen, resolution eighteen thirty, is a proposed land use map amendment to redesignate fifty acres of the seventy-eight-acre property from community commercial to light industrial business park, and the companion rezoning is case PC two eighteen, ordinance fourteen sixty-three, to rezone those fifty acres from, uh, B-one PD general commercial to B-five PD light industrial business park. And then the remaining twenty-eight acres of the property would be, uh, reserved for a commu, community commercial opportunity development. U-Haul proposes to develop, uh, a moving and storage facility on, uh, approximately ten acres of the site. Um, and, uh, this is our general plan map. Unfortunately, some of these exhibits don't come out very well, but basically, what this shows us is that the property is right here, northeast corner of Baseline in Idaho. Uh, you can barely make it out, but our general plan actually reserves very few areas for industrial development. County island at the northeast corner of Meridian and Baseline, uh, once again, that is a county island, and then the other county island, oh, we're here at Houston and Meridian. Uh, we do have a very small industrial area south of the Safeway, and we have another, a small lot industrial area off of Seventeenth and Eighteenth. So, basically, the proposed general plan amendment would take about fifty acres of the seventy-eight-acre property, this that you see here in the gray, and redesignated, uh, light industrial business park. This is just another graphic of the same thing. This is a conceptual plan. Uh, what we can really say about this conceptual plan is that this is the only thing that is probably more or less what's gonna happen. This is, is very conceptual, this being the co, community, uh, commercial B-one PD, uh, part of the property, and then the forty acres on the east half of the property. Once again, just a conceptual plan. We will probably see a subdivision proposal at some point. Uh, not sure how many lots we're gonna end up with, uh, but like Alon said, we want to work with, with Amerco to partition this property in such a manner that if somebody needs three, four, or five acres, that opportunity's available, uh, opportunities which we currently lack now.
Rudy, can I interrupt?
Sure.
Can you go back? The, uh, you kinda skimmed over what would happen with the other twenty-eight acres. Is that what's in red?
Yes. Yes, the, the part of the property that will remain zoned B-one PD, general commercial plan development, is this twenty-eight acres, immediately at the northeast corner of Baseline is this 28 acres immediately at the northeast corner of Baseline in Idaho. This could still develop with some kind of retail opportunity, a shopping center, maybe in anchor stores and shops and restaurant pads and things like that. And then, the U-Haul facility would be in this 10-acre area here. And then, the industrial subdivision would be east of what you're going to see from Idaho Road. So, right now...
If homes start getting built south of here, that would be important to leave that zoning then as the shops.
I think it would be prudent, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yes. And the east part of the property, recall, is right across the street from Baseline Industrial Park. So, we already have an 80-acre industrial development, a rather clean industrial development here in Baseline Industrial. And hopefully, this will be a complement and reflective of what we already have at Baseline Industrial Park.
And the other side of the, to the west side is still state land?
undeveloped state land, yes.
Which, this could then make that more desirable.
Absolutely.
Get some interest to it.
Absolutely. Yes. And as a matter of fact, Mr. Mayor, right now, the state land on the west side of Idaho Road is still at a medium-density residential zoning. Obviously, we're anxious to work with the state, not only on land south of Baseline, but also this 120-acre property here because this represents the other half of the road. This represents what's going to happen across the street from, hopefully, a commercial development here as well as the industrial subdivision. This relates to the rezoning. Staff and the applicants worked together on a proposed palette of uses, of exclusions actually, for the commercial part of the property, the 28 acres and the 50 acres of the property. I think we are, unfortunately, we can't read it very well here, but you do have a copy in your packets. Once again, like Ilan said, we're trying to weed out the things that are not desirable or conducive in a business park atmosphere, like, you know, animal slaughtering, medical marijuana, tow yard, storage lots, RV storage facilities, you know, some of the heavier industrial-type uses. In your packets, you also have our complete commercial zoning matrix. It's about 12 pages long, and there's a lot of uses in there. These two columns here represents the uses that staff and the applicant are recommending not be included as possible uses in a future industrial or commercial business development. And honestly, Mr. Mayor, about the only thing we disagree on is the RV storage. RV, I'm sorry, U-Haul wants to take about, I think about half of their property and designate that for RV storage. Yes, sir.
Well, I was going to ask in the aspect, did the applicant agree to all these conditions?
I believe so, except for the RV storage.
Okay. And we're not for that?
No. So, we've brought this, these cases, well, this case to you for a couple of discussions now. We took it to P&amp;Z. We took it to city council under state law. We had to hold two public hearings with our Planning and Zoning Commission. Among the ideas that came up, the intent to the development of the overall site, Mr. Pollock has represented that Amerco will be the master developer and that they are partnering with CBRE, CB Richard Ellis, to market the property and hopefully attract the types of uses that Ilan and Janine have spoken to them about. Commissioners had questions about the proposed PD exclusions list. Commission, the complete, I already mentioned the commercial matrix. The intent of the exclusions list is to try and create opportunities for retail, office, clean industry types of businesses with buildings on property, not just storage yards and other incompatible or unsightly uses that, quite frankly, can be found in a whole bunch of other parts of the city. We're not, we don't want to duplicate what's going on in some of the other industrial parts in this development. On August 28th, there were questions, once again, about U-Haul being the master developer. Mr. Pollock also showed a couple of examples of other developments they're doing in the Phoenix area, one in Queen Creek, another one in Buckeye. Commissioners had comments, questions about possible surrounding development, what types of businesses Amerco was trying to attract, fears of other business owners with regard to a large U-Haul facility. As you know, we have a lot of businesses here in town that have small U-Haul outlets. You know what's going to happen to those? I think Mr. Pollock can address that issue. And the commission was very honest and also brought up the issue of, you know, we have a lot of RV storage lots. We really don't want another RV storage lot. We want jobs. We want sales tax revenue. At their meeting on September 11th, there was some discussion about what is a power center versus an industrial subdivision development type of land use for the property. Once again, reiterated that they were not in favor of RV storage. And just very quickly, Mr. Mayor, why no more RV storage lots? This list here is a list of about 20 inquiries that we've had within the last year, year and a half, folks seeing empty lots around town, you know, the remaining four or five acre lots we have around town. Some of these folks we have met with, some of these were, you know, phone calls, some of these were folks that came to the counter. So, we've had inquiry for at least 20 storage lots, RV storage lots in the city. And this other list of 20-some properties represents RV storage lots that we already have in the city. So, we get a lot of inquiries for RV storage lots, contractor yards, and things of that sort. The Planning Division, Planning Commission recommendation, of course, staff is in favor of both the general plan amendment and the rezoning with some recommended conditions. The commissioners recommended approval of the general plan amendment. At Mr. Pollock's request, they also voted to continue the rezoning until their meeting of November 13th and request that the council support them in that continuance request. So, the actions before you tonight, Mr. Mayor, the possible actions, I should say, GPA 118, Resolution 1830, because it is a general plan amendment, under state law, a general plan amendment can only be approved by a minimum three-quarter vote of the city council. So, we have five, six people voting tonight. That means five out of six would have to vote in favor of the general plan amendment. Council can continue the rezoning to the P&amp;Z meeting of November 13th, and you can continue, you should probably also set a date for your council meeting to either November 20th or December 4th, or a later date if you so desire. And the rezoning is ordinance number 1463. You will notice in your packets that that ordinance is incomplete because the Planning and Zoning Commission has not yet made their recommendation. I'd be happy to go over what some of the recommended conditions are, Mr. Mayor, or I can answer your questions at this time.
So, Rudy, what we're looking at is just the general plan amendment?
That's right.
That's all. I mean, the conditions for approval are in the rezoning case.
Right. Our general plan has language in there, and it follows state law. It's not just a bureaucratic process. It's a state law that says, cities shall consider all general plan amendment requests one time a year at a single public hearing. So, we have done all the necessary advertisement. We sent the request for comments out to a whole bunch of different agencies that we are required to send it to, as well as a few other agencies that we probably didn't need to send it to. We only got comment from one agency, and that was ADOT. ADOT is interested in what's happening near the freeway. And that was it. So, basically, we have met our statutory requirement. We are bringing this, these requests to you at your second meeting in September, which is what the general plan sets. Now, Joel may want to chime in here. I suppose you can make a decision on the general plan amendment tonight, or you can probably continue both items if you want to. But staff is supportive of the general plan amendment request, and we're supportive of the commission's request for a continuance to give Mr. Pollock and the Amerco folks a little more time to work out some numbers and examine the feasibility in more detail.
Just to comment, so I think there are going to be only six votes on this all the way through because Councilmember Rizzi will continue to recuse herself all through this whole process. So, whatever we do, we'll be done with six.
Right.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Joe, a question. Do we have to, in the motion, list all the amendments in the motion itself?
All the amendments?
Mm-hmm.
You mean all the, you mean all the conditions?
Yeah. That's what I mean.
I think you could reference the documents. But if you don't like some of those things, then you would have, whoever makes a motion would have to strike those and reference those.
Just wanted to make sure that if we had to include them, we did, or if not?
I think you can do it by exemption, if there are going to be exemptions.
So, this is a public hearing, correct?
It is.
So...
And the applicant is also here to make a presentation.
Yeah. Would the applicant like to present?
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, good evening. My name is David Pollock. I am the Development Manager for Amerco Real Estate. I also apologize for the frog voice. I'm fighting a cold. But it's very important that I'm here tonight. It was very important, not only for this project, but also to clarify why some decisions were made and why we're asking for what we're asking for. But before I get into the detail, you know, I want to thank both staff, you know, Ilan and Rudy. Their presentation has a lot of great detail, and I don't want to waste your time by going through another PowerPoint. So, I've kind of revamped what I wanted to tell you, kind of who we are, why we're here, how together this really does work, what we need tonight, and how we go forward. A lot of you are familiar with U-Haul, and you're probably a little confused with the word Amerco. But, you know, U-Haul is celebrating, U-Haul International, which is the corporate company, is celebrating its 74th year in business. Amerco is the real estate development and construction division and real estate agency for U-Haul International. I will share with you that, as it relates to U-Haul companies that are corporate-owned around the country and Canada, there are over 1,850 of them. As it relates to the dealer affiliates, the dealer affiliates, I do want to go on record, I am not opposed to her being up here and voting. I think it's real important because you know what? The dealer affiliates is what started this company, and they are very important to us. So, when we hear that someone needs to recuse themselves and they're concerned, I want to tell you something. Our chairman, if he was here tonight, would remind me and everybody that they have made our company, and it is very important that we continue to work together to make sure they're successful. Because if they're successful, we're going to be successful. We'll get into that a little bit more. Yes, we did buy the property a few years ago. I was not involved with that, and U-Haul Center Operations came to Apache Junction and said, we want to build a U-Haul Center. And at the time, it wasn't favorably, the town didn't want it to go forward. So, U-Haul Moving and Storage just kind of went on their way. A couple of years ago, and my division handles all the bare ground and the mixed-use developments around the country in Canada, I was approached by our chairman and said, why are we not building in Apache Junction? I don't know, but I'll go find out, okay? I'll go find out what's going on. But I do need to ask you, sir, now, our chairman happens to be the son of the founder of the company, only two leaders, and his philosophy, a lot of similarity to the town of Apache Junction. His philosophy is employment, family, and community. And when I came to Apache Junction, I heard, I heard, and I keep hearing over and over again, employment, quality of life, and how do we generate sales tax? Wow, a lot of commonality here, okay? So, when I came here, I wanted to come here with open ears and hear and listen. Really, the only question I wanted to know was, what does the town need? What need do they, what is needed? What I was told is, they need land in order to increase their employment base. Oh, I have land. I have property. Okay, that's, this could work. What else? Well, there's a process you're going to need to go through. Okay, what would that be? Have to go through a general plan amendment because the property you bought is not set up to do what we want to do. Okay, and how does that work? They shared with me, we told them it was going to take, it was only once a year we could do it, but it's very important. Then, we talked about, we probably have to rezone the property because if U-Haul wants to build and if we want to do the industrial, we need to rezone. Okay, so I made a decision, not the town. Let's go ahead and put it together. Let's do the general plan and the rezoning. I think we can do it, okay? I think we can, we can go down that train track the same way and get there. Well, unfortunately, I might have made the wrong, I made the wrong, I made a mistake. And the mistake was, I was thinking that we could get there at the same time, and I was pushing, and in reality, there are still a few pieces to the puzzle that are needed in order to do the rezoning. So, that's why we asked for a continuance. I did ask for 30-plus days. That, it was decided for November 13th. We are working very closely with staff, with the Department of Transportation, with our consultants, which was mentioned, both LGE, which is an industrial developer, and CBRE Ellis, which is, which represents us all over the country for retail commercial. Now, they haven't done any industrial for us, okay, but they're well-known, and we trust them, that they can help market and merchandise this property. So, we're very confident that this can happen. As to the timeline, I don't have a magic ball, but we're all in. All right. So, there are a few pieces to the puzzle, as I said, that are still needed from staff that we want to kind of go back to staff with and talk about timing and scheduling and, you know, how it's going to work. So, we're all on the same page because at the end of the day, we want to make sure that what we're delivering is the best for the community, and we don't come across as a partnership that is not doing what it said. And I use the word partnership because that's very important. This is not just about Amerco U-Haul. This is about Apache Junction, okay? You need some property in order to increase your employment base. We have 50-plus acres to be able to help provide that, okay? What we need to do is to agree on the general plan, which we believe we meet all the criteria to allow you to favorably vote for the general plan. The rezone, we want to do secondary. Again, there's some pieces to the puzzle, and we've talked about that. So, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, if we look at it in terms of a partnership, step one would be the general plan. Step two is, we'll come back with the rezone to Planning Commission and then come back to you for your vote on that. And by then, everything will be worked out. See, we own and operate 60 mixed-use developments around the country. Within there, there are 700 tenants within there. We are currently doing, finishing up one and doing two more bare-land developments within the Arizona and Colorado. We are going to succeed in what we do, and we know you want to succeed and be able to provide the service, the employment. So, together, we're going to make it happen. So, at this point, what I'd like to ask is, please consider this application, to vote favorfully for it. And at this point, I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Anyone?
Excellent.
I see no questions at this time.
Very clear.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Just to clarify a point, Rudy made, there was a, said that you need to get a three-quarter vote. Well, Rudy and I just looked the law up. Under Title IX, it's actually a two-third vote. So, two-thirds of six. You go to the round number, so it'd be four.
Four of six.
That would have to approve it, correct? Because it's a major amendment.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any more discussion? I'll call for a motion on... Okay, go ahead. You explain your motion.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Put the plane here.
I move the Resolution 1830, a resolution to the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, approving a general plan amendment, case GPA 1-18, a request from Amerco Real Estate Company for a major land use plan map amendment to redesignate approximately 50 acres of the 78-acre property at the southeast corner of US 60 and South Idaho Road from community commercial to light industrial business park. Be approved with no amendments.
Second.
We have a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
So, on the second half of this, are we going to have a motion to postpone, to prolong that? Or, Robin, go ahead and explain.
That was good. I like that. No, we are going to continue this until such time as we get the information from planning and zoning. Will that work?
Well, I think...
Or do I need to have a date certain?
That doesn't avoid the cost of a public hearing. So, like Rudy suggested, you make it, you can make it a date in the future, like, say, for November 20th. And if that date comes, and the rezoning hasn't been done yet in P&amp;Z, you can still continue it again.
Okay.
Or if you want to be safe, make it December 4th.
Do we have to even name a date? Can we just table it?
You do. Well, if you table it, then what happens is, you'd have to republish. Then, there's a cost that the applicant would have to pay, and I...[1786.76] there's a cost that the applicant would have to pay, and I...
Do you want to say something?
Yes.
Oh, I don't know how much it is, Rudy, roughly, how much does that cost? To readvertise? Yeah, so if you want to avoid that cost...
So we can put a date, and if that date does not work, then we can come back and put another date, and we can continue to do that until such time as both the developer and everyone else is ready to present their case on this.
So that's good that all those, all those options got explained.
Mr. Mayor, could I just add one thing?
Sure.
When considering the date, November 20th is a holiday week, doesn't, we'll still have a meeting, but there could be staff or even council members that might be gone that date, so you might consider December 4th instead, but I'm just offering that up because it's a holiday week, just to be mindful of that.
Well, if Councilmember Reese continues to recuse herself from this particular vote, I will also not be here on December 4th, so that will bring your numbers down more.
Can I ask, does everybody plan on being here? I will be here.
On the 20th?
Yes, I'll be here.
Okay, the 20th, we'll try for that, okay.
We're all going to be here.
I move that ordinance number 1463 be continued until the 20th of November.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes, and I'll be here.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes, and I will also be here.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes, and I'll be here.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes, and who knows?
I know.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes, I'll be here.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
So we are now up to...
13.
13. Presentation, discussion, and public hearing and consideration on Resolution 1831, McMillan Manufactured Home Development. Rudy.
Mr. Mayor, this is case GPA 218. This is a request by McMillan Manufactured Home Development Company for a general plan amendment for their property located at the southwest corner of Goldfield and Old West Highway. It's a 38-acre property, rezoned back in June of 2000. The city had just adopted a new general plan. The general plan envisioned that property, and as a matter of fact, the general plan still envisions the property as a commercial opportunity area. However, that part of the city unfortunately still lacks some infrastructure extension issues and kind of on the far east part of the city. Although a few develop, commercial developers have asked about the property over the years for various reasons, it just hasn't been attractive for, for retail, employment, other commercial development. There is also a property directly south of this 38 acres, which is about another seven-and-a-half acres, also zoned, commercial, and not a whole lot of movement on that property either. So back in 2000, we worked with Mr. McMillan to implement the city's general plan. We saw this as an important, important property. The city did, the city initiated rezoning. It was zoned for a manufactured home park, so the city initiated with a rezoning to C2. Today, our zoning calls it B1. So a general plan amendment is a request to redesignate the property from a community commercial designation to a medium-density residential designation. Lennar Homes proposes to then come in and rezone the property and plat the property for a plus or minus 178-lot conventional single-family home subdivision, which would be non-age-restricted. Once again, our general plan map, the property is over here off of Goldfield Road, just north of the freeway. Once again, ADOT has expressed interest in coordinating access in and out of this property. It's very close to one of their off-ramps here, and of course, Old West Highway also bends around the corner, so it's kind of an interesting area. Road construction-wise, I believe there's a, there's a median on Meridian now, and that causes some, some further complications, so details that are going to need to be worked out during the rezoning process and certainly during the plating process. This is the property. Once again, this is Goldfield, this is Old West Highway. Southern, it runs along the north side of the property. The 28th Avenue alignment runs along the south side of the property, and right in this area here is that other commercial property I talked about. It was rezoned and conceptually planned for a gas station, convenience mart with a car wash, and then as you, as you kind of wrapped around the property, there was some strip retail, once again, conceptually planned. This development has not happened. Hopefully, if we have 170 new homes sitting here, maybe that, that'll spark some interest in, in neighborhood-friendly services, retail types of businesses on this corner. And then, of course, right in this area here is the freeway. This is an aerial view of the property. It's got a couple of minor washes, non-fema washes running through the property. This is Old West Highway, this is Goldfield, and the freeway is just a little bit south here. Directly to the west of the property is a low-density Penale County island between Star and Cortez. That is an unincorporated part of the city. To the north of the property, we have mostly residential, although I believe this lot here belongs to ADOT and is zoned commercial. And then over here across the street, we've got some ADOT dirt stockpiles and other properties owned by ADOT, and of course, once we get north and southern, that's all state land. This is the conceptual plan for the proposed Lennar subdivision. Lots of greenery around the development. We expect that when the, the plating process comes through, we'll see half-street improvements on four sides, southern Star, 28th Avenue, and Goldfield, and still hoping to have some discussions about where this main exit, entrance/exit is going to be located. Maybe it's here, maybe it's a little farther north, if we can work out some issues with the median, or maybe it's someplace else. That'll, that's the kind of detail that'll be worked out later during the rezoning and the plating process. And by the way, that was of, an issue of major importance to the commission. We don't want folks to, to go out and turn right and head out of the city. We want folks to turn left and come into downtown and shop in Apache Junction, enjoy our restaurants and our, and our wonderful events and everything else. So once again, main access is a very important issue, which we will look at in detail when we plat the property. We also brought this case to you for a couple of meetings, a couple of work sessions. Folks seem generally receptive to the proposal. Folks hope that this would spark development of nearby commercial zone properties, and maybe even improve some of the stockpiling and, and stuff that's going on across the street. People asked for what types of buyers Lennar was looking for. Once again, it's not age-restricted. They envision both empty nesters and, and young families moving into the development. We did hear, I already mentioned ADOT, and we also heard from a resident in, to the west of the neighborhood who had some concern with, with two-story homes next to one-story homes, and he also, at, at the last public hearing, asked about possible street improvements. We mentioned that we expect street improvements on four sides of the development. And if two-story homes are an issue, like we have done with a couple of other cases, we can always recommend a condition that the homes on the west side of the belt of the development be limited to one story, so that way you transition from, from lower height homes to higher height homes, and preserve the mountain views and not cause as much of an impact to, to the single-family, low-profile development to the west. And, and that'll be worked out later. I already mentioned the neighbor who spoke. We also received a phone call from a gentleman who owns about nine acres, a little bit to the west of the site, Mr. Gosicki. Some of you may remember Mr. Gosicki from a few years ago, and he was very supportive of the project as well. At the public hearing last week, commissioners had questions about the access. The same neighbor got up and spoke about the two-story homes. Mr. Pugh stated that they will coordinate with ADOT and that Lennar is also very desirous of north-south access at Goldfield. The Planning Division is in support of this request. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the general plan amendment, subject to one condition, that the applicants will assure that an acceptable and permitted means of ingress and egress be approved by any related agency to allow north and southbound travel from the development. And once again, Mr. Mayor, Resolution 1831, this is a major general plan amendment, and thanks to Mr. Stern, it is required to be approved by a two-thirds majority of the council, which I believe is five out of seven votes. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions?
Okay, I, I was asked two questions from folks outside. First of all, this is not manufactured homes, correct?
That's right.
We're not talking about modular homes, or we're talking about stick-built homes?
Yes.
Okay. Site-built, thank you. And the second concern was home values next to a freeway, that home values next to a freeway would disintegrate and it would become a low economic area.
I believe Mr. Scorro from Lennar Homes is here.
Okay.
He's way more qualified to answer that question than I am.
Thank you. This is a question that came from one of our constituents, and they have a right to hear and answer to that, so...
Sure, now, the flipside of that is, because of Lennar willing to extend the infrastructure, the infrastructure out to that part of the city and provide the appropriate water loop and sewer service.
Absolutely.
Sea value going up.
It brings up other stuff, absolutely, so, yeah.
One of the things that I am, of course, I lived just north of there on, on Star Road as well, myself, and I looked at the aspect on, are they talking about coming out on, I'll say, south side on Star into Old West Highway? Is that one of the proposals in the aspect on it? Because I think that would be perfect.
The conceptual development plan does show two possible, or one, one possible additional ingress/egress on Star, one on, the main one on Goldfield, but once again, once, when we get into the plating process, that is something we can look more in detail. You want to have at least two for safety purposes, but there can be more than two.
Well, I, I definitely would like to see the, I'm going to say, the egress, the main egress on Star in the aspect on it, because that is in, right up there, and there's a crossover across the street, across the median, which, everything's there.
Right.
On Star, you say?
Mm-hmm.
I believe there's a church there.
Questions?
Just north of it.
Yeah.
So just, can you go back to that, the slide where there was big yellow and then the pink land south of... How big a lot is that pink, where you, you were talking about, you know, possibility of a...
This, this actually, this commercial-zoned area actually consists of four or five parcels, and together, they make up about seven, seven-and-a-half acres.
Seven, seven-and-a-half acres. And if we were to put a, an egress off of Goldfield there, because, and we want to direct people to go back into Apache Junction instead of just going south, would that require a stoplight and all that, or...
That will be determined if, if our city engineer, I don't think Emile's here tonight, but certainly, I think there's got to be at least some kind of traffic study done. Where a, a stoplight might go is, is something that's going to need to be answered certainly at some point. You don't want to put a stoplight too close to a freeway exit. You know, is it the quarter mile, is it the half mile? I'm not sure, but that certainly is an issue that we would need to look at.
There's also a hard center there.
I know.
Any more questions? Okay, are we ready? Does applicant want to speak?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, Ralph Pugh at 1744 South Val Vista Drive in Mesa. It's a pleasure to be here on behalf of Lennar Homes, the country's largest home builder, by the way. So in answer to Councilmember Barker's questions, these will be site-built homes.
Thank you.
And Lennar is excited to be here. Don't, I mean, after listening to Rudy, don't you want to just take a breath? And just go, "I'm tired already." So Rudy, thank you, that was great. I don't even, on, on behalf of Lennar and the McMillan family, we say amen to the recommendation. We've had multiple study sessions, multiple public hearings. Be happy to answer the question about homes backing up to the freeway. We are not immediately adjacent to the freeway. I'm not sure exactly how far. I would say at least 300 feet, maybe even significantly more. And you'll see in many communities that actually do back up to the freeway, done correctly, they thrive, they prosper, and they do not deteriorate. And we see that as, as you progress through Apache Junction into Mesa, there's some, some that probably don't, haven't done well, but many can and do work just fine. But we're far enough away not to worry about it. So Mayor and councilmembers, I really don't want to bother you. You've, you've heard a lot tonight, so we urge you to adopt the resolution, and the criteria for general plan amendments are listed in the staff report, and we concur with all of those criteria and the findings that were made, both by the staff and by your Planning Commission. So I have Mr. Todd Scorro here and Nicole Schultz from Lennar if we have really tough questions. So thank you, Mayor.
Any more questions for...
I just have one quick one, because this is still owned by McMillan. With the approval of the general plan amendment, then it will transfer into Lennar?
Oh, Mayor Sertie, Councilmember Evans, in regard to that, I think where you're really headed is, when are we going to file the zoning case? We're about a week away from that. I have not been involved in the contract, but typically, there are conditions of general plan approvals and those type of things, but we intend to file the zoning case, hopefully, a week from today or a week from yesterday. That's our plan.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I think we're all through with questions.
Thank you, Mayor.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this issue?
Good evening. Longtime resident of Apache Junction, my name's Steve.
Could you move closer to the microphone, please?
You can't hear me?
It's not being picked up on the recorder.
You can hear me, though.
We also will need your name and address.
Apache Junction is my address. I've lived here for 40 years. My name is Steve. That's all that I think I'm required to say, as far as that. But let me point out some facts about this 38 acres. If you take that 38 acres and divide it by 178 homes, your average lot size is going to be less than a quarter of an acre. To be exact, .21 acres, and that's not subtracting the streets and the right-of-ways. So what size homes are going to be built, square footage? What's the parking issue's going to be like with that many people? You're going to have your family come over to visit, holidays, whatnot. Where are they going to park? I've been in some of these subdivisions. There is no place for them. The lots are too small. That's five homes on one acre. Again, not subtracting for the streets. The quality of life, everybody talks about. I don't see, when you can be taking a shower and open up the window and ask your neighbor for a towel, your setbacks. You have, what, a 40-foot setback from the front? If you're building a garage in the back, you have to be 20-foot setback there? What's the setback from the edge of the property to the house? How close are they going to be? Five feet. I don't see this as quality of life that Apache Junction is looking for. I've lived here for 40 years, moved out here for the open spaces. If people want to live in a dense community as such, let them go back into the city where they'll be happy. But out here, the people that live out here treasure the open spaces. We treasure the horseback riding, and we don't need, we don't need the prob, the problems of ingress and egress, like we all are aware of in Queen Creek, San Tan Valley. You come, go sit on Ironwood, take a look at how long, how long the lights are. They get three minutes. We, we're lucky to get a minute or even a half a minute, getting in and out of our own town. And then we passed, they wanted to pass that 416, 417 for new infrastructure. Well, we're going to pay to build all these new roads. Who's going to benefit? Is it the citizens? No, the developers. I'll ask the developer, is he going to buy one of those homes and move in? Are any of, one of you interested in moving into that subdivision? Are the lots large enough? The homes large enough? Do you have enough, you know, I'm sorry, but I've got great concerns. I don't feel that developers should be permitted in Apache Junction, and, and if you, if they do request it, I think it should go to a vote for the people to vote on, because I don't, I, I truly don't think Apache Junction's looking for that lifestyle. because I don't, I truly don't think Apache Junction's looking for that lifestyle. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Tom Burkle at the 3710 South Gold Field Road. I'm in the Golden Vista RV Park to the south of the 60 there. The only thing that I had to mention was I wondered if that site would be better for the community to have more of a tax-based generation use, like a Walmart or hotel or other means of tax generation, than it would be the tax burden for the police and the fire, for the city to have to deal with another residential community. Once that area has a home site built there, it kind of takes away at the entry to the area of Apache Junction. As far as the people getting off the freeway, I think it'd be a better use for a commercial base, restaurants, hotels, Walmart, something to that effect, at least something that would help generate tax for the city and also be something that would be a draw for people to come to the area other than just having another residential site. It's kind of a first-site thing that you see when you get off the freeway. Would it be better to have a subdivision there with a lot of houses and a busy way for people to come and go? Or would it be a more of attraction to help the community, having stores and, and like a Walmart or something, is what I thought would be a better use for that land, because once it goes residential, it's just another housing subdivision. It being so close to the freeway and a main arterial running from the freeway to the town, I thought it would be a better use for a commercial base, and that's just my comment. As far as a residential, you know, I don't have a problem with residential subdivisions coming to the area, but I think it would be better to have a, more of an off area, maybe deeper in the, in the city, than it would be right next to the freeway, so, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
George Schroeder, 2444, West Virginia. I've lived here 35 years. I'm lamenting on what both of them said. I, the, the amount of houses per acre, it's just, you know, it's like George Jetson. We're getting crowded here. Now, coming in from, from the east to that area, all the time I've been here, it's, it's, it's a void. It's ugly. It's, we want to do something there. I think we can all agree on it. We want to do something with it. So, do we do something that's more attractive to attract people to come here? Or do we build a place, and first of all, they didn't address who's going to build a noise wall, because that, that's a big cost. For, you know, right along the freeway there, they're gonna, it's going to cost some money. Who's paying for it? Fire and, and medical, they've got no room in there. If they plan on building it the way it is, you get, you get some non-compliant residents who wants to park his trailer or car on the street and somebody else needs to park there for five minutes. All of a sudden, there's fire and rescue trying to get in there. Not going to happen. So, I think the number of houses is a little much. I, I don't mind seeing the houses or just anything there. Like I said, as long as I've been here, it's been ugly, just a void. It's like nowhere's land. We should do something with it. There's piles of dirt that A.DOT owns. We need to do something with that. They can, we have other places that A.DOT can store their, their recycle. So, second, well, actually, that, that's about that. We, we need more, less houses in that area, but still build something so it doesn't look like a ghost town. Anyway, thanks.
Anyone else like to speak? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I, I think that the folks that spoke all had some, some interesting points, but I think that what was misunderstood by many is that the vote that we take right now is on the general plan amendment. And that will change it to residential. The crowding, the streets, the number of houses per acre, blah, 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 blah. All of that will come with the plats. When the, when the developer brings the plats, at that point, then you need to come, you need to talk about your five houses per acre is too small, the roads, et cetera, et cetera, because that's when that has an impact. Right now, it doesn't. And you did have some excellent points. The problem has been, I've lived here 50 years, so I'm a little bit ahead of you there, Steve. And that area, which we desperately wanted for commercial, we desperately wanted to have folks come into the community and have commercial property there. Unfortunately, commercial's not interested in that area. They are simply uninterested. They're looking at areas closer up to the freeway. They're looking at areas down, further west from that. They're looking at areas on Ironwood. They're looking on areas on Idaho, et cetera, et cetera. They're not interested in that area. So, we have a choice as a council. Do we, as a council, want to take advantage of the fact that a home builder wants to come in, wants to put in a community at that location? Or do we, as a council, sit back and say, "Well, in 20 years, some commercial guy might come in." They might come in. Or maybe we'll get an RV storage yard there that won't have any sales tax at all. So, that's the decision that we're sitting on.
Which is what it's zoned for now.
Which is, yeah, which is what it is now at this point in time, zoned for. So, that's the decision we're having to make up here and, and I would appreciate it if you appreciated that decision that we're having to make.
Chip.
Yeah, I also want to capitalize on the idea again. We're not making a decision on what type of a development this is. We're just opening the door for a community that can come in there and develop. And that is going to be done later on through planning and zoning process through, that will come up into the future and come back to us at that time.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Just a point here, that several years ago, there was a, a community proposed for the corner of Meridian and Southern on the south, the southeast corner. And the council turned it down at that point and saying they wanted to keep it for commercial because we knew that A.DOT was coming in with a half diamond, and it's still empty today.
Yeah. No, it has piles of dirt on it, is what it's got.
No, and A.DOT dirt, but it's, it's still vacant today. It was the same argument. Maybe commercial will come in and, you know, that's been, what, 20, 25 years ago and it hasn't happened, so. Just a, just a comment.
I think Robin made a good point. She's been here 50 years. That lot's been there for 50 years and there hasn't been any commercial interest in it. We've got, she said it very well, so I would agree.
And I want to add that one of the reasons we don't get nicer restaurants is because they do look at population density and this cumulatively does add to our total, so that would attract better retail, so.
If no more discussion, I'll call for a motion.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that Resolution Number 18-31, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, approving general plan amendment case GPA-2-18, a request by McMillan Manufactured Home Development Company, LC, for a major land use map amendment to redesignate an approximately 38 gross acres property at the southwest corner of South Gold Field Road and East Old Highway, Old West Highway, from community commercial to medium-density residential be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Wish it were commercial, but yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Consideration of approval per proposed Resolution Number 1827. Joel.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd read the other one also, they could be done in one public hearing, but there'd be two separate motions.
Consideration of approval per proposed ordinance Number 1462.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you've seen this, oh, I don't know, three or four times now. And so essentially what this is, this is the procurement code and the biggest change is the limit of the dollar amount. The current dollar amount, there's, there's two levels. Less than 25,000 and then 25, well, 25,000 and above and less than 25,000. So what we're doing is we're going to create four new levels. So the first one will be less than 5,000, greater than 5,000 but less than 10,000, greater than 10,000 but less than 50,000, and then greater than 50,000. And so within those different categories, there'll be different procurement methods. And I really don't have anything else on this because we have seen this so many times and I'd ask, ask approval. This will help, this will assist the city managers, staff in procuring all sorts of documents or all sorts of items and goods and services for the city. Less than $5,000, that's the best part. That could be done locally without any, any kind of official bid, so that will help out the local businesses.
So, any discussion? Like you said, we've talked about this a lot. So this will be one motion or two separate motions?
Two separate motions, one for the ordinance and one for the resolution.
Do we have a?
I'm sorry.
Two for the ordinance, read by title only and?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Yes, read by title, yes.
So I'm ready to start entertaining motions.
This is public hearing?
No.
Uh, yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address this issue? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and now call for motions.
Your Honor. I move that Resolution Number 18-27, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, declaring as a public record that certain documents filed with the city clerk entitled 2018 Amendments to Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Chapter Three, Administration, Article Three-Dash-Seven Procurement Procedure, repealing any conflicting provisions providing for severability and declaring an emergency be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Is there another motion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that Ordinance Number 1462, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, adopting by reference that certain document entitled 2018 Amendments to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Chapter Three, Administration, Article Three-Dash-Seven Procurement Procedure, repealing any conflicting provisions providing for severability and declaring an emergency be approved. With, with no more amendments.
I heard a second over here. Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
And is that all the motions on that? No, we, no, that was the title only, right?
I don't have.
Where's the title one?
No.
Do we have to do a title one?
No.
I don't.
Is that all of them or not?
Yeah, you're done.
We're good.
It's very, uh... Do not lie. I miss our big books up here.
Yeah, we're used to that.
Yeah.
So would you like a motion on the next session?
Yeah, the selection of meeting dates.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM be held on Monday, October 1st, 2018, in the city council conference room and city council chambers located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectfully, respectively.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
17.
This is the time for the public.
We got one more.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I move that executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM be held on Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018, in the city council conference room and city council chambers located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectfully.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Why can't those be two together again, like they have been in the past? Why do they have to be two separate motions?
They've always been two separate motions.
Have they?
Always been two separate motions.
Have they, really?
Always been two separate motions.
Thank you. I don't remember that either. It seems like they always flow together.
They've always been two separate motions.
It's the new electronic stuff that's...
Yeah, I'm just new here. We'll get used to it.
And now this is the time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Each speaker must have already filled out a request to speak form and handed it to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussion on the issues presented but may respond to criticism and may direct staff for follow-up with the speaker directly and/or place this matter on a future agenda for council discussion. There's a three-minute limit for each speaker. They've waited very patiently. I have, if they're still here, Stephen Stone Seifer.
People get to listen to a lot of long-winded people. You cut some of that stuff out and people are out of control. I have a property at 1684 South Stetson Court in your town. I live in Mesa. I rent that property. There are several other people here. My back wall of my property is 20-plus feet from your street. Never knew I owned that property. Get a letter in the mail, tell me I need to spend a whole bunch of money cleaning up that property. Got a plat. Apparently we own that property. When we bought the house, we didn't know it. Other people, most of the people in the complex, are all elderly people, probably on a fixed income and also have an issue with having to clean that property up. We're looking for a solution. The plat comes up with probably $5,000 to $8,000. The plants are supposed to be there. They were never there when we bought that property. I ain't going to spend that money. We're looking for a solution. Other people are going to speak about that. Whether we give the property to the city and let them do whatever they want with it, because my wall is a long way from the, a long way from the street. Probably, I've never seen anything like it. And we want to look for a solution for that. Whether we just do away with all the ridiculous plants, a plant, there's some silver plants. I mean, it's a really expensive plant. They weren't there when we moved there, when we bought the property. You can move on to the next person.
Thank you.
That's, that's all I had to say.
Bruce Hammacher.
Good evening. Bruce Hammacher, 1672 South Stetson Court in Apache Junction. Last night Larry, I can't remember his last name, made a presentation on our problem over there. So, anyway, I bought that house about 2008 and it was run down, nobody living in it, a couple busted windows and just like property would be if nobody takes care of it, stuff like that. But out in the front, in the particular piece of property that he was talking about, and Larry brought up, I was not here at the time. My wife had it cleared, but she does not remember or she didn't take any pictures of any of this plant life that was supposed to be there. Right now, there's a few plants, a couple of small trees, a creosote bush, and one other thing. Anyway, last week I had it cleaned up. Looks pretty nice, but apparently I don't meet the C.C.N.R.s. And what I would like to see done is... I would like to see done is maybe modify to allow it to be the way it is right now. I'm speaking of my property. There's four of us involved. Steve is one of them, me, Michelle, and Pete. Anyway, if it could be modified to not be so strict, and if they wanna put, if we're forced to go, an irrigation system, I don't know how we're gonna pay for it. They have to be, well, you borrow money, I guess, and make payments, which I don't wanna do if I don't have to. But I'd like to see us, and I don't know if this is even possible, for us to vacate that land to the city. And wow, three minutes goes by pretty fast.
Yeah.
Anyway, my, my request is consider modifying the CCNRs so that we don't have to go for extra plant life and a water irrigation system. And that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Gray? We have Mary Gray, too. If you guys wanna come down together, maybe we'll give him six minutes together, cumulative.
Can she walk? She's in a wheelchair. Good evening. John Gray, sixteen fifty-six South Stetson Court. I live next to a runoff that collects water from streets above. And I'm responsible for taking care of the weed control. We're asking the city to take care of the drain within the basin of that. As you can see, I retired from the Navy. I now have cancer. I'm beating the problem, but I still need help. And, and I'm asking the city council to take over the cleaning of the drains because if, if they're not clean, my house can be flooded. I have been able to take care of it up until I was diagnosed with this problem. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Mary S. Gray. I'm hard of hearing and blind in one eye, but I wanted to get up and say something about this. And you just talked to, you just heard Bruce and John tell you about their problems in particular. The main thing that we're concerned about is the storm retention basin. That's, we live in the Santa Fe subdivision. We have ten houses. And all of the ten houses that we have in that area, several of them are A-level, are veterans, senior citizens. And four of the, four of the couples in that particular area are not well. And my husband just told you his problem. So, our neighbor who shares lot three and four, take care of the, the retention basin. And he's told you, I think, that he has cancer. And he's having trouble taking care of that. So, the young person that lives next door to us, who shares the basin with us, has been coming over and taking care of John and helping him since he's been sick. My husband, we did mention that he's on hospice care, which means that he's, he can't do a lot of things to help himself. But what is needed for, we got a notice, not a warning or anything like that, to tell us that we need to cut the grass in the basin. And we did that last week, most of us. And Bruce has said, we cut the front part of the, the street facing Sixteenth Avenue. That's three minutes?
No.
Two minutes.
No?
One more minute.
You got one minute? Okay. But I just wanted to show you the situation. Had been suggested that we get some help. And we don't wanna HOA, but we do, what we do wanna do, though, is take care of and get some people to help us take care of the, the basin in particular. So, we're, we've been making plans and trying to get somebody to help us take care of all that. And we have some pictures here and to show you what the property looked like before we came. The things that's got, got us mostly concerned is that we've been told that we have to replace a lot of the bushes and trees and things that were supposed to be there that weren't there. So, we need to discuss with a zoning board or somebody as to how we can go about making arrangements to put these bushes, bushes and things there. But if you wanna see the pictures, if you show them. This is the way it was two thousand and four, when that housing they built, we've put in.
See those last night?
I have other pictures, but I'll say that so we can come and talk to you again and show you what we have.
Okay.
Okay.
I do have one, thank you.
Yes.
That, that is your three minutes now, so...
What did you say?
That is your three minutes are up now. And we did, I think a lot of us saw those pictures last night, too.
Yeah, okay.
I have one more. Steve, no name. I think that was already from before, yes. So, would anyone care to respond?
Your Honor?
Yes.
If I remember our conversation from last night, city staff had said that they were gonna try to meet with the people in this neighborhood and try to help come up with a solution. Was that my understanding, that staff was wanting to get together and help?
Well...
He, he can't really...
Well, if I can, if I can answer that.
Yeah.
Right now, you can direct staff
Right.
to meet with the individuals and other neighbors. And I think last night, I think Larry already got that impression. But you can do that officially if you'd like right now.
Thank you.
And, and like Bryant, when we spoke, I don't have a problem at all with the city helping them get back to square one, but they've got to have some kind of agreement of who can carry the ball from then, from that point on. If we can help them get it back to its, in a working order, but they have to have an agreement. Because the city can't take over all of these subdivisions that don't have HOAs. So, however, we can work it out.
Go along the lines that we don't require this vegetation. If it's just bare rock that's safe and not a fire hazard, I don't think we should force them to make it like a commercial HOA. So, I, I think the watering system is, they don't, I don't, I would hope that we would not force anyone to do that. Just keep, keep the fire hazard down and make it look nice, the minimum, I think, for the, for this community. So, that would be my recommendation to staff. Anyone else?
Excuse me?
Okay. Other than that, it's been a long-windy meeting, so we will adjourn.